All right. Welcome to today's Wednesday, July 22, 2015, meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes of July 8. While you're thinking about that, I'll commend Wendy on getting the whole job done in 35 minutes and making me look bad.
Uncontested hearing, so it's a little easier.
Uncontested hearing, yeah, okay.
A little easier.
Rob, it looks like you have to make...
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Rob moves to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Gregory, thank you. Are there corrections or other notes for the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes of July 22, 28, sorry, July 8. Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And I will abstain in the other abstentions, Joel. Okay? Got what you need then? Good. Correspondence, Mike, anything from staff?
None from staff this evening.
Okay. Just checking with you, do we have the shared readings posted?
They have been.
Ann is nodding, thank you. So, for the benefit of both the audience and the commission, we have a process that we've instituted for our professional learning, which we call shared readings. And they're posted on a link from the P&amp;Z website on the city page. And the ones that we are reading are ones that commissioners requested relative to the benefits of street trees. We're thinking about tree planting ordinance revision. And there are two different ones on the benefits of trees. One is more on the health benefit side and one is on the more physical infrastructure side. David Rock, Chair of Moscow Tree Commission, provided some input on those. And we really wanted to focus on street trees and not backyard trees or other kinds of trees. And then the third one, often, I've tried to have only two of those readings, but there's a third one, which will just give you an idea of how a larger city, Portland, has managed its tree planting ordinance. What you'll see is, if you've got overhead wires, here's some choices. If you've got a narrow planting strip, here's some choices. If you've got a wide planting strip, anyway, so it'll give you an idea, that kind of detail would be worked on in the current imagining by the tree commission. The ordinance would say there is a tree planting guide. Anyway, so those three items, and tentatively, let's read them for our next meeting in, the first meeting in August. All right. So, any other correspondence from staff or from commissioners? Transportation Committee?
I was unable to attend the meeting on July 9th, so I don't have any report on that. The next meeting of the Transportation Commission will be on the second Thursday of August, and I have not yet seen an agenda. Mike, do you have any reports from the Transportation Committee meeting on the 9th?
I do not. I know that they were going to discuss bicycle parking in the downtown core, but other than that, I haven't heard what the outcome was.
Okay. Thank you. I see I'm remiss in sharing with the audience, my intention, number nine on the agenda is the Water Conservation Plan draft. We were going to have a report, and the thought was, maybe Mike could do an abbreviated version. Then staff has suggested that actually they'd like to bring Nicole in, who is our conservation person. But we didn't want to make Nicole wait till the end of the whole show tonight. So, we'd like to table that for our August meeting. So if anybody has come to hear item nine, that won't be happening tonight. All right. Next up on our agenda is open microphone. This is a time when members of the public may come and speak to the commission regarding matters that are not on our agenda tonight or currently pending before the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you'd like to avail yourself of that opportunity, please state your name and address for the record, come to the podium, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Victoria.
Victoria Seaver, 121 North Lily, Moscow. I was going to wait, because you have all these people here, but you went right to my topic, shared readings. Shared readings are great, they're wonderful, they're little gems, but if you don't know that they're on the P&amp;Z site and have some reason to know they're there and go look, I think people miss it. So, I would like to suggest we find a way to get that out there much more visible, like a click or two from the homepage. So you said something, a little flashy thing about what they are and a couple of topics, because they hit transportation, they hit parks, they hit, they hit arts, they hit housing, they hit everything. And I think it would be a really good talking points for the other commission people and for citizens, and invite them to get back, you know, get back to you and get some conversation going, because they're just gems that I think should be shared, shared more broadly. So I'd like to suggest that somehow we get them out there more visible. And anyway, that was my comment, and since you went to it, I thought I might as well get up and say it.
Great, thank you. And I will take that up with staff to see if there's a way that we can do that. I have tried to get the Moscow Arts Commission, because some of the things that we've read have overlapped with some of their interests, and some of their interests overlap with ours. So far, we haven't quite hit it off yet, but we'll take that up. Thank you, Victoria. Any other public, or any other open microphone comments? All right then, Mike, I think you are up. And while you are getting ready, let me explain to the audience how a public hearing works. Staff will present the information to us, information that you would see in our packet. And then I will open the public hearing and invite three types of comments. Comments that are in favor of the proposal, comments that are opposed to the proposal, comments of a general nature. And then we will close the hearing and the commission will deliberate. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Before you tonight, we have a proposal for Harvest Hills addition to the City of Moscow for a rezone, comprehensive plan, land use amendment, as well as a preliminary plat. So before we started, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on this property. I know that the preliminary plat and the rezone and the comp plan amendment don't include this entire piece, but just wanted to walk you through a little bit of background as to where we've come so far up to this point. So, back in 2005, we had rezoned and annexed this portion from Ag Forest to our moderate density residential, which is our R2 zoning district. We also had a preliminary plat for Windfall Hills subdivision, and that plat included 77 single-family lots, about an average lot size of 9,700 square feet, which equated to 4.5 dwelling units per acre, rough net density. You also had roadway alignments virtually the same as what the Harvest Hills proposal, which happened in 2013, as well as the first portion of Third Street within this proposal before you tonight. And that was approved August 1st, 2005. And so at the time, this was the first Windfall Hills approval that happened. So you see the Third Street alignment that ends up extending from, this would be Mountain View here to the west, ends up going to the end of the subdivision and then going into Rolling Hills Eighth Edition currently. 2006, the applicant submitted a PUD proposal which coincided with the Windfall Hills preliminary plat. Part of the PUD, they wanted to reduce the rear yard setback to take some of those houses away from the hillside to the south. So they had done a PUD proposal and had to include some type of submissions to the, for the PUD, and what they had submitted was architectural style of homes within that subdivision. And they had to reduce front yard setbacks to push them a little bit closer to the street, reduced it from 25 to 10. And also, developer proposed to provide additional landscaping and public amenities to allow for that deviation in the setbacks. And that was approved on July 19th, 2006. And we have a little bit of background about public improvements and Verizon pedestals that needed to be relocated. And this all pertains to Jansen Street extension, which is really in the middle of this area that we were talking about in 2013 and previously around 2006. And it does pertain to one of the conditions to update the development agreement, so I'll just briefly go through what had occurred with the removal of the, or the relocation of the pedestal, as well as some of the public improvements that were made by the developer as well as the city. And so in 2008, the developer at the time had approached the city about a Verizon pedestal that needed to be moved, and that was part of the proposed subdivision. City at the time was in the process of improving that portion of Mountain View that was directly adjacent to this property before you tonight. The city had a desire to extend that Jansen Street extension to the north to connect to the Moser area, and that would end up connecting with Damon Street. So they ended up doing a memorandum of understanding, the first one was in 2008. And that basically said that the city would contribute up to $50,000 towards the relocation of the pedestal and be responsible for the underground utilities of Jansen Street extension, and that the developer would be responsible for the public improvements to Mountain View, which included a bicycle ped path on the east side of the street, and as well as the above-ground improvements on Jansen Street extension. And then in 2008, July 21st, the final plat and development agreement ended up being approved by council. What ended up happening was that some of the conditions with that memorandum of understanding were not satisfied, which resulted in a 2009 MOU to replace the 2008 version, which made the city responsible for improvements to Mountain View, which included the paving, curb, gutter, drainage system, which were they were, they were already planning on doing at the time. Part of that made the developer responsible for the total cost of Jansen, which included the underground utilities the city was going to be responsible for in the beginning, and that was during phase one of the subdivision. So there was two phases as part of the previous Windfall Hills. It also required a dedication of street right-of-way, 25 feet and 35 feet respectively, easements on the east side of Mountain View, and that was for the street, ped, bicycle path on that portion. And we had the final plat, which was recorded on June 3rd, 2009. So the city has since constructed the agreed-upon improvements to Mountain View Road. The developers only completed those dedications of the 25 and 30-foot, 35-foot wide easements on the east side, and they never filed the Windfall Hills final plat or paid for the Jansen Street extension construction. And the final plat approval had since expired prior to the start of the subdivision plat. So they had to go back, it was basically null and void from that point on. Then in 2013, Harvest Hills had come forward, they had a preliminary plat, and that was it, just for Harvest Hills addition, and it was virtually the same roadway alignment and similar lot configuration as the previous Windfall Hills subdivision. They had 75 lots, I think, instead of 77, which ranged in size from a little over 7,000 square feet to 19,496 square feet in size. A little bit after the project was approved through city council, the applicant determined the project was not financially feasible as it had been approved, and they had never advanced to the final plat stage of that process. And so, this was an example of the Harvest Hills preliminary plat that was approved back in 2013. You mentioned before, virtually the same as the Windfall Hills approval. So that brings us to the proposal before you tonight, a little bit smaller of a piece. This is a 7.45 acre parcel, highlighted in red, so it doesn't quite extend all the way to the Jansen Street extension, which is right here, only extends to about this portion of the property. But we have really three components before you tonight, a rezone, comprehensive plan, land use amendment, so that the comp plan would be consistent with the proposed rezone. And we also have the preliminary plat of that 7.45 acre area, which essentially plats it into 22 twin home lots and one neighborhood business lot of 2.2 acres. The area for the twin home lots ends up being somewhere around 5.25 acres. So just wanted to come, cover the topography of the area. You have Mountain View here running north-south on the west side of the property. This would be Third Street here, running east-west. We have a portion of Third Street on our comprehensive plan that's proposed to be a collector street across the subject property. These contour elevations represent a two-foot elevation change. So you have kind of the southeast corner of this property with elevate contours and slopes probably maxing out at about 20% in that southeast corner, generally sloping in the northwesterly direction. You do have Paradise Creek, which runs through a corner of the property up here in the northwest. And there is a small portion of the Hundred Year Flood Plain, which is proposed to be a riparian parkland area in that northwest corner. Also have majority of the Rolling Hills additions to the south. You also have other R2 Damon Street, Moser Court development to the north, and then R2 subdivisions there to the west of Mountain View. Looking at the current comprehensive plan, land use designation, it's currently designated as neighborhood conservation. And neighborhood conservation is typically the designation we give to residential areas which are already developed. And so at the same time, the Windfall Hills subdivision had gone through, the plating process was about the same time that we had adopted our comp plan, which was around 2009. So that really is the reason why it ended up being neighborhood conservation, is because it, you know, at the time, it was already platted, and it was just going to be developed, and we wanted to apply the neighborhood conservation to that area. The proposal before you tonight is suburban commercial, in the pink there, is to change that land use designation to suburban commercial from neighborhood conservation. And then the areas that are usually zoned R1, R2, and R3, we usually designate those areas as auto-urban residential. And so, the proposal before you tonight would be to change the designation for those other areas, the twin home parcels, to that AUR designation. So, looking at suburban commercial for those 2.22 acres, the intent of that is to provide neighborhood commercial services compatible with residential neighborhoods, typically located at the intersection of collector and arterial streets. So in this case, we have Mountain View, which is an arterial, and we have Third Street extension, which is a collector. So, meets the intent of the comprehensive plan there. The most appropriately zoned neighborhood business, which would be the rezone proposal for this property before you tonight. Looking at the 5.25 acre area, being proposed to be changed to auto-urban residential, typically reserved for low to moderate density residential uses. It calls for a mix of single-family, townhome, and limited multifamily uses that could be allowed within auto-urban residential. And it directs us towards the appropriate zoning, which would be R1, R2, and R3. When we review the zoning map of the property as well as the area, the immediately surrounding area would be moderate density residential, which is our R2 zone. Further down the street, you see the intersection of Sixth and Mountain View, which is zoned neighborhood business, and that's Picard Building there in the northwest corner. You have a small remnant portion, probably from the county zoning at one point in time, that's still Ag Forest for the residential property in the northeast corner. And then you have the majority of the properties that are on Sixth Street to the north are the R3 designation, which is our medium-density residential, and Sixth Street is designated as a collector as well. The rezone proposal before you tonight is to rezone that 2.2 acre parcel to neighborhood business, and then the remaining 5.25 acres to medium-density residential. It would be similar to the configuration you have on the intersection of Mountain View and Sixth Street, where you have neighborhood business abutting medium-density residential. So, proposal, once again, R2 right now, the 2.2 acres, neighborhood business. What the zoning code says about the neighborhood business zone is that it's our lowest intensity commercial zone. It's generally intended to serve adjacent residential neighborhoods. And so, instead of going across town for services, it's intended to provide some of the smaller-scale local services that would just serve those adjacent neighborhoods. It's intended to be easily accessible by multimodal transportation. So you have the intersection of Third Street as well as Mountain View, which is an arterial. And then it also allows for various residential uses, also allows for some limited retail sales that are intended to be provided to the household consumer, allows for personal services, restaurants, professional offices, as well as daycare facilities, churches, and community and neighborhood centers. Looking at our R3 designation, permits a wide variety of residential housing types, which includes single-family, two-families, also twin homes and townhouses are included within the R3 zone. And it also says that public systems in neighborhoods can accommodate a greater intensity of land uses are generally the areas where it's appropriate to apply an R3 zone. Advancing forward to the preliminary plat, once again, 22 twin home lots, typically ranging from a little over 4,000 square feet in size to about 6,500 square feet in size. Minimum lot size for a twin home lot within the R3 zone is 3,250 square feet. So, the minimum proposed here is about 700 square feet above what the minimum is. Looking at our neighborhood business lot, 2.2 acres in size. We also have Third Street, like I'd mentioned before, is a collector. We have a 34-foot-wide street section for collectors, and that includes five-foot bike lanes on both sides of the street, but it does not include any on-street parking within our street standard for collectors. And then this is the preliminary plat that's being proposed. You can see the 2.2 acre parcel here, it's proposed to be neighborhood business. You have the 35-foot-wide easement that ended up being a parkland dedication here on the east side of the street that we referred to in the earlier MOU for the property. It ends up going in a northwesterly direction to accommodate the Hundred Year Flood Plain, which you can see here at the dash line. The Hundred Year Flood Plain would be completely contained on the park property. And you also have a 25-foot-wide parkland dedication that was part of the original MOU as well on the east side of the street, you can see that there. I got the extension of Third Street, which is a collector. Have the majority of the mains extend through this Third Street alignment. You have the water main, which is already existing on the property, it ends about right here, that'll be picked up and extended and ended at the end of the proposed subdivision. You have a sanitary sewer line, which has already been developed, it's already in the ground, and there was a previous agreement that it'd be extended to the Rolling Hills Eighth Edition subdivision, and so that already corresponds with the Third Street alignment that runs through this property. You also have stormwater detention ponds, there's two of them, you have an existing one here to the south, there's a storm main that runs through an easement, you can see the two dash lines here, that these lots would be served off of. And then you also have a stormwater detention pond that's proposed as part of this development. Any stormwater runoff that's generated from this development would have to meet the pre-development rates of undeveloped land. So, there'd be some type of orifice, and the stormwater would only be conveyed at those pre-development rates. Just wanted to touch on the thoroughfare plan, this is provided in our comprehensive plan, which just shows street designations. You have Mountain View, which is the arterial, represented in blue, and you also have Third Street, which has been planned through the comprehensive plan as the dash green line here. Dash green lines represent future roadway alignments, and the green represents a collector designation. Just to touch on that water infrastructure, I'd mentioned before, we have, currently have a main that extends to the property, and then that main would just extend along the Third Street alignment. Did want to just touch on the typical projected consumption of water. It's anticipated that under commonly observed household water use within the city, and that's at 114 gallons per day per occupant, that the proposed twin home lots could reasonably anticipate it to use approximately 2 million gallons of water per year. And I'd just done this for the 22 lots for twin homes, because we don't know what's going to go on the 2.2 acre neighborhood business lot in order to calculate the proposed water Looking at the sewer infrastructure, sanitary sewer, we have that eight-inch main that currently exists in the Third Street alignment, and like I'd mentioned, is part of that previous agreement with the Rolling Hills development. And you have the storm sewer, which is conveyed through mains and Third Street, as well as those two detention ponds in the northwest and southwest corners of the subdivision. Then the stormwater detention ponds would end up discharging into Paradise Creek. Parkland dedication for the proposal is 4.79 acres of net developable land, once you take out parkland as well as stormwater detention ponds and streets through the subdivision. R3 requires 7% dedication, neighborhood business requires a 9% dedication, which results in 16,554 square feet of dedication requirement as part of the subdivision. And the applicant had proposed to dedicate parkland in those two locations that we had mentioned before, the 25-foot pathway to the south of Third Street alignment in Mountain View, with that equated to 3,333 square feet. And you also had the 35-foot-wide linear pathway that, which was accepted before, on north of Third, east of Mountain View, and also the portion that runs along Paradise Creek, and that area equates to 22,491 square feet in size. And so you have a cumulative of 25,824 square feet. And so that's going to be 9,269 square feet in excess of what the requirement is for this subdivision, and the applicant wishes to bank the excess parkland for future plats, which may happen to the east of this subdivision. Just to highlight those two areas, represented in green, the one to the north, there's the 35-foot-wide easement, and the one to the south is the 25-foot-wide area. And with that, staff recommends approval of the rezone and comprehensive plan land use amendment with no conditions, and then approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions, and these are both coming from the Public Works Department, that the applicant shall widen Third Street from 70 feet to 80 feet near its intersection with Mountain View Road, and that's in order to accommodate a left turn lane. Then the applicant shall enter into a new memorandum of understanding and development agreement, which allows the deferral of the construction of Jansen Street, including all underground utilities to a future plat additions to the east. And so, because we may not know what that alignment is with Jansen Street, Public Works Department is allowing, recommending allowing the deferral of the construction of Jansen Street, and, but we needed an amended MOU as well as a development agreement in order to do that. And so with that, I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questioners? Staff recommends approval, why?
Of the rezone and comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Land use amendment?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if you look at the intents of the comprehensive plan land use amendments as well as the rezones, you have the arterial street with Mountain View, you have the collector street with Third Street. So it meets the intent of designating it as suburban commercial as well as neighborhood business. You have the same scenario down there in Third, or on Sixth Street in Mountain View, really just meets the intent of the comprehensive plan on that. And then the rezone, this is really an area that's lacking in the northeast quadrant of the city for some of those smaller-scale commercial services. And so, you know, it's really the arterial and collector, they have... They have relatively flat land, which would accommodate larger structures, which also the zoning code points to. And so, really meets the intent of the comp plan as well as the zoning code in both of those descriptions for the comp plan amendment as well as the rezone.
Okay, thanks.
Mike, missing at least from my packet is the relevant criterion standards. Do you have a slide of those that we could think about?
Don't have a slide, but I can certainly pull it up. I do have copies of those at the end of my packet that I can give to you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Other questions from commissioners?
I had a question about the slopes on that southwest portion, which are fairly, I think, fairly steep. Are there going to be some requirements for stabilizing those slopes? I'm assuming that the lots going to be fairly flat going in, and then those banks are going to be fairly high or fairly steep.
About the southeast?
The southwest corner, in the contours, you were, in those two foot contours you were showing.
Sure.
It's a, you said about a 20% slope. So are there going to be some issues with respect to stabilizing that area?
Southeast, southeast. Southeast corner here.
Right, southeast, I'm sorry.
Southeast corner. Yeah, there will be pretty extensive grading that'll probably occur on that south side and the developer could certainly talk a little bit more about what the plans are. But those will be part of construction drawings. And if it undermines the slopes on the properties adjacent to the south there, there would be some type of retaining wall which are required. And, you know, it can't be over a two-to-one slope in that area. And then if it has a surcharge, those, all those slopes would need to be, have some type of retaining walls up against the property, which prevents slough of the hillside.
I have a question about sewer, Mike. You talked about onsite sewer capacity or what is currently in place. Are there any sewer bottlenecks that are downstream from this? I mean, slowly we seem to have been building more and more things out the Mountain View direction. And at one point, there was some discussion of some bottlenecks further on between Mountain View area and the sewer treatment plant.
Our recent sanitary sewer master plan, and I actually printed a copy for tonight. I had reviewed that area and there was a little bit of a bottleneck down by Heron's Hideout Park on Mountain View, but not up within this immediate vicinity of this area.
But this would be contributing to potentially the load on the sewer system further down?
Well, it was just a small portion that was actually going to end up being replaced at some point in time because we have the project that's going to extend from Sixth Street down to Joseph area. And so that, as part of that project, the main that runs down Mountain View will be replaced in that area and that should alleviate that smaller bottleneck in that area. It was still pretty unsubstantial as far as the, you know, it wasn't in the red. It was still in, you know, blue represents maybe 0 to 25%. So you really have no issue. And then you had a portion that was green and that was probably 25 to 50% of capacity. And so that's what that small portion had represented. So it's fairly minor in that area.
And it is part of a master plan to continue to remediate that bottleneck issue?
Correct.
Thank you. Other questions from commissioners before we have the applicant come up? Great. Who is here tonight to speak for the applicant? Okay, we're ready for that.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington Street. And first off, I'd like to thank the commissions for looking at this proposal and thank staff for the excellent job that they always do. I had a, I had a whole list of things I wanted to bring forward and explain to you guys, but Mike covered all the issues. So, I guess what I'm here to do is, if you have any questions, I would gladly answer them or if questions arise during the public hearing, I'm certainly available to answer those.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Are there questions for Scott? Down here.
Does there come a time, you didn't show how the twin homes will sit. Does that happen a little later? Or do you feel like you don't need necessarily to show? They're sharing lots, right?
Right. They are sharing lots. Generally, the garages share the lot line and then the houses are a smaller house. But, you know, a nice.
And so, in that vein, I mean, for years, we've been looking forward to any little neighborhood commercial that could happen. And one of the things that I wonder about is, do you see a value in showing at some point a conceptual idea of how that 2.2 acres might be laid out? Even though you can't really predict, you don't know who's going to come there. Likely won't be one building, but.
We actually have laid out some options to look at it ourselves and it varies so much on what goes in there that, you know, the parking certainly drives the design.
Sure. And would it be fair to say that there would not be a curb, a cut on Mountain View? Or would there be, imagine there would be?
No, there certainly would not be a cut on Mountain View. It would be off of Third Street.
It's just some of those kind of marginal things.
Can you speak a little louder because some of your words are completely lost to us. Hold the window.
Right, if you're a little closer to the mic, we can't hear what you're saying.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize for that. Do you want me to repeat what I was talking about? My question was just, in this small neighborhood commercial area, how would it be valuable to imagine how that might be laid out? And I was just, I'm trying to imagine how it could be used that would give folks in the city a chance to see what it might be. It's hard to imagine. And so I was just curious if the engineers had a layout that would show where curb cut would be or whatever as something develops there in that 2.2 acres. And that was my essential question. Thanks very much for correcting me. I forgot to use the microphone. Can you hear me now?
I can.
Great.
Thank you.
And I'd like to just add to that, that most likely any commercial business that goes in there would face Mountain View to draw the most attention to itself. So, the storefront's going to face Mountain View and Third Street. So that it's very attractive to the development because this is the beginning of what could be further development. So, it's of utmost importance that we get this right.
Other que, sir?
A follow-on to the neighborhood business. At the neighborhood meeting, there was some discussion about what kind of businesses maybe had made inquiries about that. The neighborhood hadn't been polled at that point in time. But do you have any further information on what kind of businesses have been interested in coming in there?
I do not, I don't know.
I'm the applicant, Scott's my engineer.
Would you like, would you come to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Engineering questions may be best addressed to Scott and then marketing and development-type questions of those natures to myself. My name is Phil Ryan Gans, I live at 620 East Palouse River Drive here in Moscow.
Thank you, Phil. So, question again for Phil?
Well, during the neighborhood meeting, there had been some discussion about what sorts of businesses were interested in coming in. The neighborhood hadn't been polled at that point in time and I wondered if you could elaborate a little bit on what you're envisioning, what businesses are interested, what feedback you had from the neighborhood.
The interest that I've heard from, basically from realtors, is there's some spots, some gyms looking for spots. There's, we envision something like maybe a neighborhood deli. If you go just slightly down Mountain View, you've got all those new city parks that'll open up in a year. Slightly to the north, you've got the pool, you've got the junior high. And then it's just literally surrounded by houses there. And so what we would like to see would be some type of, perhaps a neighborhood market that would have sandwiches, ice cream, things of that nature. Perhaps a, an office space that would accommodate a professional of some nature. And then, you know, other services of those types that would be desirable for the immediate neighborhood so people aren't having to drive from that end of town all the way to downtown to take care of things that, you know, the kids could get on a bicycle or, you know, mom can just go down the street to get. So that's what we envision. The structures would most likely be along Mountain View and then turn so that they go slightly along Third to address the road, the curb cut. It would likely be right about where it says Third Street on that map. And then that would be the entrance. And then most likely, the parking would be to the east of that portion with the buildings generally toward the west and the south of that lot. That's generally what we envision. But at this point, I don't have an architectural rendering or something like that because we don't really know exactly what businesses would be interested. But at the same time, these are the types of inquiries we've had.
Other questions?
Mike, in his presentation noted that Third Street is anticipated to be a collector without parking. Any comments on whether, from an engineering standpoint, that's adequate parking for the residences that are being proposed?
Well, on-street parking in this area would be difficult with the turn lanes and, you know, that, and in those curves, you start cutting down site distances, which makes it a little bit dangerous. So, in this first phase, we would probably not be looking at on-street parking.
Okay, so, follow on to that. Since this parcel has gone through various iterations and some of those iterations have then come back and requested that on-street parking be developed in some fashion. I can't remember, was that in this portion or was it in the portion further to the east?
All the other iterations showed the parking on that straighter area, you know, as it rounds this corner, then it straightens out and that would be the area of on-street parking. With the addition of neighborhood business, I envision some sort of an agreement that, you know, after hours, there may be some parking available for that for events or, you know, birthday parties, something.
Come over for a yard sale or something, I might park over there and.
Right.
Other questions for the applicants? Okay. Thank you. Mike, just to help me clarify, we're going to have one public hearing and then make decisions on several issues at once, right? That is, the comprehensive plan change and the rezone. So, the members of the public are invited to speak to any of those issues that they wish.
Correct. Yeah, I would propose bundling them together. You know, at the end, we'll have to make separate motions for all those items, but we can certainly take public testimony for all three items at the same time.
Great, okay. And you'll coach me at the end to make sure we get the right set of motions in the right order.
Sure.
Thank you.
Obviously, the comp plan first, boom, boom.
Right, okay. Again, I'll get coaching on that when it comes to decision-making. Okay. So, with that, let me open the public hearing and invite members of the public who wish to speak in favor of the application to come to the podium and state your name and address. And if you haven't already signed in, that sign-in sheet will help Ann with the minutes and make sure she gets your name and things spelled right. So, anyone who is interested in speaking in favor of the application? Okay. Anyone who is interested in speaking in opposition to the application, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what your concerns are.
Guess I'll get to be first. My name's Dan Weaver, I live at 123 North Mountain View Road. They gave me an address that they thought I could remember. I've lived here for, in that location for over 40 years, so I've watched a lot of growth and change in the area. I'm opposed to the proposed preliminary subdivision plat and rezone for the property known as Harvest Hills Edition, LUP 2015-0009, for the following reasons. One, the neighborhood business zone is not compatible with the neighborhood. It will increase traffic, noise, light pollution, be dark stores, and possible security issues. There's currently a nice shopping center just down the road a little ways. There are countless empty storefronts and several other small business areas in the city. You can drive around and take a look at those. The NB zone is simply not needed and is not compatible with the existing zoning and residential area. Number two, the proposed change from an R2 zone to an R3 zone is also not compatible with the existing neighborhood. The entire area is and has been R2, single-family residences, for as long as I can remember. People purchased homes in the area because of the R2 designation. It is not fair to all who currently live in the area to have the zoning change to a higher-density zone, which increases noise, traffic, and other higher-density issues. This zoning change request presents many impacts of incompatible uses. The proposed change is spot zoning. It's arbitrary and solely for private gain to put more people into a smaller space with smaller lots. There's a huge circle, as we've seen on the map up here, around Harvest Hills Edition, which is R2. This proposed rezone is not suitable for the area and will unduly burden the neighborhood, public infrastructure, and cause environmental problems. Harvest Hills Edition should, if the development goes ahead at all, remain R2, as is all the rest of the area. Number three, traffic, as mentioned, the development will greatly increase traffic on Mountain View Road, which is already quite heavy. You can talk to many of the people who live on Mountain View Road and it's difficult to even get on the road sometimes. The proposal asks for rezone to accommodate 22 twin homes, which creates 44 residences and, at 2.25 people per household, which is a national standard, means another approximately 99 people trying to access Mountain View Road in the morning on their way to school or to work. This number does not include the other 53 or so lots, which will be in future developments in the R3 category in the longer term, which would also double or triple the aforementioned number of people trying to enter Mountain View. The proposal that we have seen here, there is no escape route, any other way than to go onto Mountain View. If there were, say, an accident at that intersection, there'd be a lot of people that couldn't even go anywhere. Number four, water use. The city has long recognized that we have limited water. We have conservation programs that cost thousands of dollars. The city's draft water conservation plan, which you mentioned a minute ago, is over 104 pages on how we can conserve water. We have water regulations that make criminals out of otherwise good, law-abiding people who happen to violate a water regulation. In a resolution, the council stated, "The city council recognizes the need to conserve water as a precious resource." According to the report here and staff, just the twin homes in Harvest Hill Edition would use another 2 million gallons of water. Now, if water is in such short supply and if we are concerned about running out, where are we adding more housing units, which will use even more water? There's also a matter of stormwater runoff. There's also a matter of stormwater runoff, which has been addressed here by staff, but I don't believe it's been adequately addressed, particularly if storm runoff just runs into the creek. Creek runs by a large portion of this, uh, particular development, and we have talked about in city council meetings and so forth about the quality of water in the creek. And if it's coming off a large subdivision, the quality is not going to be very good. The City of Moscow Comprehensive Plan, Section one point one point two states, "The community of Moscow wishes to manage physical and economic growth through sustainable policies while maintaining and promoting the unique character of cities, of the city and its neighborhoods." The proposed zoning change will not maintain or promote the unique character of the neighborhoods all around it. There are currently quite a few lots already for sale in Moscow, and I don't believe we need higher-density housing, particularly in this particular area. So I strongly request the Planning and Zoning Commission to deny the requested zone change and, uh, change in the plan. Thank you.
Would you remain a second in case we have any questions? Any questions? Thank you. Other comments?
Hi. Um, my name's Leonard Kepke. I live at one oh eight North Mountain View, directly across the creek from the commercial zone. I'm probably the largest single property line sharer, I'm not sure if that's the right terminology, but more of this proposal borders my personal property than any other person affected here. There's quite a history with this particular piece of property, and the, the paper trail farther up the line, um, goes to the developer that, that, uh, created the, the hill, the, on top of the hill, Atani Drive, and, and that subdivision up on top, where there are three and four and five-hundred-thousand-dollar homes that this road will connect to. When this was put together the first time, and this is my understanding from personal conversation with that developer, that developer's name is Rafik Atani, that he sold this particular piece of property with an albatross around it, that whoever purchased this piece of property had to put through the street and the utilities up to his property. And that is why this particular piece of property has become so extremely expensive to develop. And I understand that, that the folks that bought it have a right to do, to get their money back, and the whole nine yards. But a high-density, um, situation, if you look at, if you look at the, the map, and you look at the properties on, that surround both sides of this development, look at the size of the lots on the lower right. Each one of them borders two of these little bitty twin-home-type lots. Um, the whole, this particular part of the subdivision is simply out of place. It doesn't fit. It just is, it doesn't fit. I'm a roofing contractor by trade, and I've, uh, worked on, in, in subdivisions on, in Moscow, in Pullman, uh, put on more house, more roofs than I care to, care to look at. I'm also a landlord. I own several rental properties, a couple of which are not very far from here. What I can tell you from experience is that twin homes, if that's what you want to call them, zero-outline homes that have a shared property line, rarely are occupied by the people that own them. They become rentals. So now we have a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom home, probably going to have to sit on top of a garage, because the lot is not wide enough to accommodate much of a side-by-side home. So these things are going to be these cute little ugly two-story, drive-a-garage and, drive underneath the garage, have ten or fifteen feet of lawn from the curb, have no place to park, and you're going to have two or three college kids, some of them, um, graduate school kids. But you're going to have two or three or four people living in each one of these units, each half, so you're going to have five, four, five, six cars that belong to two or three, uh, college kids in each side, trying to park somewhere. No offense to the college kids, they pay my way, they pay your way. It doesn't take very long before a, a detached landlord ends up with an eyesore. And, uh, I just, this is the wrong place to have something like this. We have, um, we have opportunity to put this out at the end of White Avenue, up by the, the bus garages and out past. And if you drive out and look at that, no offense to that developer, they have a right to do whatever, but those houses, you stand like this and you can touch both houses. It is so unattractive, it's, they, they literally call it White Harlem. And White Harlem used to be the military buildings down on, I don't know, what is it, Sixth and Hayes, or whatever it is down there. This is just wrong. I mean, the, the folks can, I understand they've got to make some money. I understand that the only way they're going to get that money is to sell a whole bunch of little bitty pieces at a very high value to recover their investment. But this isn't the place. This is, this isn't going to work. My fear, and I don't think anybody's going to stand, I know that the developer and the engineer aren't going to stand up and say so, but it's going to end up being a strip mall. That's what they're going to stuff in there. They're going to stuff in something that has room to put a gym in, room to put a deli in, room to put whatever in, but we're going to end up with a strip mall on Mountain View, and it doesn't fit. This is a residential neighborhood. There's nothing definitive that, that, that you're going to do that's going to say, "We will only put in a church. We will only put in an eight-to-five doctor's office." You're going to put in something that says, "Well, the, the neighborhood needs A," and so you're going to end up with a, um, a Circle K store. You're going to end up with, I don't know what, but it's going to be a strip mall. And there's not going to be parking for a strip mall, there's not going to be access for a strip mall. The, the project, as laid out, just doesn't fit the lot. It doesn't fit the terrain, and it doesn't fit the neighborhood. And it'd be a shame, because once we start down this road, you're not going to be able to, to turn it back, and we're going to be stuck with this thing. And as far as proximity to, to business for the neighborhood, I've lived there for thirteen years. If I need something, I can literally walk to Safeway. It's, what, half a mile? It's not inconvenient to live there without a gym. It's not inconvenient to live there without a grocery store, a deli, whatever. I used to teach at the, uh, at the junior high, and at that time, the junior high was a closed campus. The high school was an open campus, but at that time, and this has been twenty-some years ago, so I don't know what it is now. But the, but the junior, the junior high kids are not going to hike down to use the, to buy some, buy ice cream, that was what was pointed out, or buy a sandwich, and hike back to the, to the high, to the junior high school. They don't have the time, they're not allowed to leave campus. It kind of defeats that whole argument. And if they are allowed, do we really want those kids to hike down at lunch break, between classes? Do we want them out on Mountain View, which is probably, it is definitely the busiest street on that side of town? It was pointed out that there are times that you can't pull out of your driveway, and there are literally times I cannot get out of my driveway because of the traffic. From seven forty-five to eight fifteen, you simply sit there and you play dodgeball. You just pull out and hope for the best. Put a dog park in the bottom end of that thing. Put a, put a sit-down park. Do something with that, with that wetland that's not going to be offensive. Move all of these houses a hundred yards up the hill. Make them buildable lots that look like the rest of the buildable lots in the neighborhood, and make them fit. This doesn't. It just doesn't. And, uh, once you start down this, it's, it's not going to, it's not going to get it back. The other concern, the question that I have, and I'm not sure that there's an answer, but it appears to me that what the developer was doing, probably out of necessity, and again, I don't have any ill will towards the developer, he's trying to make a buck too, is they're loading up the bottom half, trying to get the second half so that they can get some nicer homes and some whatnot. And it was my understanding with Mr. Atani that when they started this Third Street project, that it was going to be required to go all the way to the top of the hill and make the connection. And he's currently building houses on top of that hill on hundred-thousand-dollar lots. These are four-hundred-thousand-dollar houses. Those people aren't going to be interested in driving through a mini-manufactured park to get to where they're going. The people that have already spent three or four-hundred-thousand dollars on the east side there aren't interested in looking down on duplexes and townhouses and college kids and car parking yard and a strip mall. It's just not what we bought into. I've lived here for thirteen years. This is not what I bought into. So, I'm going to, done with my piece. I wasn't very polished. I didn't have, uh, much of an itinerary here. But I would like to reserve the right to come back and make comments, um, at the end if someone else has brought something up that needs, in my opinion, needs, uh, expanded upon. So, please, please do not let this happen. It's just, it's the wrong, it's the wrong layout for the property. There are other uses that are much better.
Thank you. Are there other comments?
My name's Paul Santoro, and I've lived at one zero five Mountain View for thirty-five years. I can only echo what, uh, Dan Weaver said about the atmosphere and the feeling, the spirit of that place would be so broken with this idea, this rezoning thing. I'm very much against it, and I drive Mountain View all the school days with my grandkids to take them to school. And it's very bad, the traffic, very bad. And you don't want any people walking along Mountain View in the morning. I see kids all the time doing it. We've had some fatalities on Mountain View Road. So we don't want to increase, it's already a, um, it's a, uh, it's a county road. It's already big as it should be. We don't need any more traffic on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I am Christine Suké, and I live at one oh five Mountain View Road. Uh, one thing which, I don't know if this part of this, but you could keep talking about the extension of Third Street. Well, how can you call an extension of Third Street when Third Street doesn't have a bridge, so it is blocked? So we need, first of all, the extension of Third Street going through, so we don't get all that traffic going on Mountain View. And that's something we've been asking for, for years and years. And I know it's not really part of the project, but I think something should be pointed out. Now, of course, the store is something else, uh, like those other gentlemen have pointed out. We don't want any convenience store. They're absolutely useless. Hamilton has their own convenience. The new, uh, the new, uh, place, uh, you know, for soccer and so on, they will have also their convenience. We don't need anything new. And we don't want those kids to be running on Mountain View. It is too darn dangerous. It has taken me sometime ten minutes getting out of my house right now. So don't add more. And also you talk about, okay, uh, we have a yard sale. Yeah, we would like to have yard sale. We cannot, because nobody can park. So when we have people coming, they have to go far away on Hillcrest, on B Street, you know? That's the only thing we can do, because we have no parking. And you are talking about putting all those houses and no parking? Where are they going to put their cars? We already don't have any place to put our cars. So think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dennis Matthews. I live at two two three South Mountain View. Uh, my house is right on Paradise Creek, directly across the street from the proposed commercial lot. And I'm a little bit confused. First off, I, I really not, don't anticipate. I don't look forward to a business across from my house. I don't think anybody else here would either. Um, I heard comments that the proposal was to, to, uh, put the business so that it would be facing Mountain View Road. I heard the developer talking just the opposite, or vice versa. So I, I, I'm hearing two different plans about the orientation of a business there. The type of business you're talking, like an ice cream shop? What's the difference between an ice cream shop and a McDonald's? Or an Arby's? It's the wrong neighborhood. Within less than a mile, I can be at all of those things. I don't, I don't begrudge somebody for wanting to develop our land, but I bought my house in nineteen ninety with the idea of staying in Moscow, staying there, retiring, here and retiring. I've been developing my place. I've put a lot of money and time into my place. And my neighbors have done the same thing, and I just dread the idea of this coming. Uh, I just did some quick things in my head, uh, with the number of houses just in the first part of this lot. I can very easily see a hundred cars hitting that intersection between seven forty-five and eight fifteen in the morning. There's no place to go, like the lady said. Third Street does not go through. I can't get out of my driveway sometimes for four or five minutes, and then I cannot go across the center line at certain times of the day. It's already overloaded. The traffic moves a lot faster than the speed limit out there. There are cars passing in front of my house frequently. It's, it's a racetrack at times. And, um, as far as needing another neighborhood business, there, approximately eight hundred feet to the south, there is a complex that's very busy, that draws in a lot of cars already. Uh, there are multiple home businesses on up Mountain View Road uh, that don't really impact. They're not really, you don't see traffic around them, but, they're there, but I just think that it's the wrong place. Across the street from us, we've enjoyed every year, there's a pond there. It's a wetland. We see migratory birds coming through there. If this is developed, that's gone. And I can only agree with all the comments I've heard about the water usage. It's just been confusing to me, because there, again, I've spent a lot of money going to drip irrigation, letting my lawn dry up, and then there's this, and then I think about, they're putting in a whole bunch more lawns in. And I, I'm, I'm a confused citizen. That's, I could go on and on, but you have other business.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'm Ed Townsend. I live at two thirty-one South Mountain View, exactly across the street from this proposal. When we bought our house about five years ago, uh, I was in real estate for several years, and I have a broker, had a broker's license from Washington, Idaho. Three important things about real estate is location, location, location. So when we bought this house, we thought the location was good. We knew that this was going to be developed into nice houses, and we would have, it's where residential areas of Moscow should be. When I came down here today, tonight, it took three minutes. I can get to most of the ice cream stores in town in five minutes. So I am opposed to any commercial going across the highway from me. Uh, I think it's about forty feet from our driveway, and it'll probably decrease our real estate value by ten to fifteen percent, which could be up to thirty thousand dollars when we get ready to sell. So, and I have owned restaurants in Moscow, and I'll tell you, nobody's going to go in there and sell ice cream cones and, and stay open. You've got to do about four-hundred-thousand-dollar worth of business now in a food service to make ends meet. So, I'm strictly opposed to the whole thing, and, and I think it needs to be changed back to the original plan and, and, uh, put the houses in there. There used to be a cul-de-sac that was going to be in with nice houses, and that's the best. And that's the best building lots in the whole subdivision where they want to put this neighborhood business. I saw, I was watching on TV the other night and they were talking at the council meeting about neighborhood business and I don't know who it was that got up and said, "Well, we're going to do these neighborhood business. This is what they do in Boise and Salt Lake," and showed pictures. We're nothing to do like Boise and Salt Lake. You can go anywhere in town in ten minutes and get what you want. So, you don't need to stick a retail business anywhere where there can be residential houses. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'm Rory Fletcher. I live at one nine four four Crestview Drive. I live on the very south, was that southeast corner where my, my one lot borders five different plots there? And I obviously don't approve of this. When I bought that house not that long ago, I knew that eventually it would be developed into, like, just like the previous gentleman said, you know, nice houses like my neighborhood. And I'm, I totally accept that fact. But this would, like he said, would devalue my house, which of course is personal benefit, or personal benefit to me to not have that happen. But also, like everybody else said, you look at that map and the whole surrounding area is, is all the same residential zoning. And the whole premise of this is that Third Street is a connector. Well, Third Street isn't a connector. So, I don't think we should develop this property based on something that may or may not occur. This property was supposed to be developed seven years ago and it never happened. So, who knows how long it's going to take for Third Street to become a connector? So, and the other thing that people have talked about is there is a lot of foot traffic there and that's not going to change. And you add a bunch of cars. Now, you add kids going in front of cross where all these cars are and most likely, like the one gentleman said, you're going to have college students living in those houses. They don't care about high school kids or junior high kids or elementary kids. McDonald's Elementary School is not that far away. They're not going to be paying attention. So, kids could get hit. And then the other thing is noise pollution. Noise travels way up that hill, you know? I can be in my house and I can hear the, the music at East City Park, you know? And I can hear people from the ball fields and I love that. I think that's great, kids doing good activities. But you're going, everybody up that hill is going to hear every little bit of noise and you double the amount of noise. You, or triple if you talk about three or four college students and then, you know, they want to have a house party or something like that. So, anyways, that was, that was my point. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Becker. I live at one nine four two Crestview and I am opposed to the rezone mainly because of the density of homes that will maybe have the tendency to become rentals. I know, and you guys know that when private property, when property is privately owned, you tend to keep it up and maintain it. And when it's rentals, there's less of an incentive to maintain it. When we bought our home, I looked out from the back and I saw a big field that would be developed into our two single family homes. I was fine with that. And I had no idea that it would be medium density homes. So, I'm concerned about the traffic. I'm concerned about the number of people there. I'm concerned about the properties becoming rentals. And it seems like it's a design that's being shoehorned into an area where it doesn't fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name is Joan Plowman. I live at nineteen forty-three Damon Street backing, not on this, but on later parts of the subdivision. I'm not a very good speaker, but I'm absolutely opposed to this and I support every word that has been said here by brighter people than me in opposition.
Thank you.
My name's Axel Mitoff. I live at two two eight two East Sixth Street. And I only have two brief comments. If you drive around east end of Moscow, you see too many empty commercial buildings. Why add another one? And the traffic that will be using, exiting Third Street to go onto Mountain View, the majority will probably turn left onto Mountain View, go south and then turn right onto Sixth Street. And Sixth Street now, trying to cross Sixth Street, Mountain View is almost impossible, especially during school hours. And I personally think this is, you're waiting for calamity to happen. I personally have witnessed two accidents already at Sixth Street. And anyways, I want to keep it brief. I'm totally opposed to what those recommendations are. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, but I can use Mike.
Can you come closer? We'll try to figure out how to help you. Or maybe, Mike, can we use the staff table, Mike? It's for the recording though. And AV staff, can you adjust a camera angle for us? Thank you.
I'm Chris Weigle and I live at one nine four eight Crestview Drive. And so, it's probably not terribly affected by this. However, the thing I have in my history, I lived in a duplex that was above, and those will be above, a small commercial area. And I have fond memories of calling the police because the kids are out burning cookies in the, in the big asphalt area, or the kids are out up to no good, or, I mean, there was, it seems like there would not be a whole lot of noise coming from a commercial zoned area there. But at night, especially if the majority of the asphalt, whoops, is hidden behind Mountain View, I think we're going to get a lot of noise from just that, not to mention all the college students when they're renting their duplexes there. So, I'm opposed, but mainly just because of the noise. I'm opposed to the commercial because it doesn't fit. And, and because of the noise of the commercial and not many people think that it'll be noisy, but wait till nighttime. That's my two cents.
Great. Thank you. Other comments?
I'm Nancy Matthews at two twenty-three South Mountain View, right across from the proposed business section. And Mountain View is, we've all heard and you know that it's a really busy street. And combines go by there a few times a year. I've heard that maybe there's going to be a, what do you call it, a circle?
Traffic circle?
Roundabout, put in at six. I've heard that for some time and other proposals like that. But anyway, I would say on an average, at least four times a week, an emergency vehicle goes past our house heading down Mountain View. And I just picture this section with all the additional traffic in and out and the difficulty of fire and police and all of that, in addition to all the other comments that have been made, I'm really opposed to this proposal.
Thank you. Other comments? The third type of comments that we collect are comments of a general nature. Is there anyone who wishes to offer a comment of a general nature?
Rory Fletcher, one nine four four Crestview Drive again. I just wanted to point out to the engineer, it's not in your plan at all, but behind my plot, there are two storm drains. So, I assume that there would have to be access to them and there's no designation for that in there. So, that was only my, my point if this does go through, that there would have to be, I'm assuming there would have to be access to those and that can't be through my property. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments of a general nature? All right. I'd like to invite the applicant to come back and make any comments or responses that they have to the things that we've heard tonight.
Thank you. I just got my name again. Just to touch on a couple of points that I just wanted to clarify. The utilities that would run up Third Street, the sanitary sewer is currently in right now and connected. So, that runs all the way up to Atani's. So, that's in with, with an easement that goes up there. One of the reasons that that larger lot was not being developed the same way in this one is residential is because of the new standards for fire and cul-de-sac turnarounds. The cul-de-sac turnaround had to be nine, the, the actual asphalt part of the cul-de-sac had to be ninety-six feet in diameter. So, all of a sudden, you start, you throw that in there and then all of the right of way around it, it eats up a big chunk of land and makes it pretty hard to access any of the rest of it, cut it into lots. And I don't mean to rain on anybody's parade, but there is a, on, on your lot up there on Crestview, there is a utility access easement that's currently part of the plat that, that is yours, that those utilities will all be accessed from the top, the, the manholes and storm, the storm drain that runs in the backside of that property. So, they wouldn't be accessed from, from the proposed property. So, I think that covers the, the technical section of it. So, I'll let Phil touch on.
One question before you go.
Yeah.
Was there any traffic study done? I know the city has a new traffic tool. Was, was there any exploration of, of the traffic impacts of this development?
These impacts were studied as part of the whole Mountain View development when J U B is, is working on that, on expansion of Mountain View. And so, the, these were considered at that time, but specific traffic study for this development, I don't believe was ever conducted.
Thank you.
Nels, may I, may I ask a question while you're, of you?
Absolutely. Yeah, that's great.
Okay, we're looking at Third Street as a potential collector street as, as the neighborhood would expand. And there would be a single driveway that's shared going into each of those lots?
That's correct.
So, would there be room for those cars to turn around and head out? Or would they be backing into a curvilinear street that's going to become a collector street?
They would be backing into the street.
Because I know that's a problem. I live on C Street and it has no traffic and it's hard, it's hard to back. So, I, I guess I just, I would see that as a potential problem with, with the curves and, and that kind of density going in, into that, into a collector's street.
We'd love to make that local street, but that's in the cards.
I have a question too and I'm not sure if this is a question for, for you Scott or for Mike, but I've heard a couple of different things, so I wanted to clarify. On, on the lots where you're proposing the twin homes, is it, is it one home per lot and they, they share a lot line? Or is it two homes on each of those distinct lots?
No, it's one home per lot and they would share a lot line, the building would share a lot line. So, you'd have kind of pairs, the, you know, the twin, you'd have pairs of houses that would work up that.
Okay.
And one driveway going down.
And one driveway that would access both garages.
Okay, thank you.
And so, the expectation is they would be bought in pairs then? Would seem awkward to develop singly?
Not necessarily. It gives it, it gives an opportunity for some, you know, there's a lot of hardworking people in this town that they don't have, they, the four hundred thousand dollar house is, is out of their reach. But they're, they're no less hardworking than the rest of us. So, it gives them an opportunity to, to get into a home or to upgrade from the home they already have into something new. So, it's, you know, gives that opportunity.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, usually they're developed as one building and then the property line divide, share is, runs along the common wall. So, instead of a duplex, which would appear from the outside that it would be, they're actually sold as two single family dwellings. And so, that's the difference between if you were to construct a duplex, you know, it'd be one owner of that property and you either have to live in one side or rent the other side out, or rent both sides if you lived elsewhere. With twin homes, you're able to sell both sides and they own the ground underneath. So, it, it provides the opportunity to have ownership of each, you know, the two sides. It could be separate ownership.
Correct. Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
Other comments from the applicants?
First is to address that. So, we would essentially have not forty-four structures, but there'd be twenty, there'd be twenty-two structures and you can buy halves. So, essentially, what you've got is a, instead of having single family homes there where you would have twenty-two homes, which in our research, what we were finding was, we couldn't put a home on that site and make it pencil. It simply wasn't going to happen. You're not going to get a high dollar home and put it on a collector's street and make it work. And so, after having gone through this complete process and gotten approval to put essentially the same number of structures and then doing the math and everything with the adjustments that needed to be made as we went through the engineering process, it just didn't, it didn't make any sense. And so, we'll have essentially the same number of structures, but a person can buy a half of, of one. And so, what we envisioned is, is, I, I can't envision this being a college situation largely because of the proximity to the university is, is so far. And what I see is a starter home where a person that's, you know, twenty-six, recently married and wants to move out of an apartment buys a half and then someone similarly buys the other half. So, something that's perhaps in that, for one half, you know, hundred eighty-five to two hundred range, and I'm just throwing out wild numbers at this point. We don't have architectural plans and whatnot to back that up. But you'd have one structure that from the road, our design would preferably have it set up in such a way that it looks like just one large single family house, but it's sold in two halves. As far as the, the parking on that stretch, to help alleviate the, the excess number of cars that may be there, you know, there would be parking, does, it pairs well, I think, with the neighborhood business because they're off cycle to cer, a certain measure. So, if there's an event where someone has a need for, you know, several people coming over, there's a ready place right there to park. In terms of addressing the traffic, I hear two arguments. One is saying, "Well, there's far too much traffic." And then, five minutes later, out of someone else, I hear, "Well, we can just get in our car and drive to whatever it is." And so, really, there are two opposing arguments. As soon as you move the commercial far away, then you are in fact the traffic that's causing the problem. And so, in order to alleviate traffic, what we need is commercial zones that are within walking distance, that are within biking distance to, to cut down on the traffic. And so, part of the reason that we do have so much traffic on Mountain View is there are no, there are no retail sites in the northeast of Moscow. And so, you have an excessive amount of traffic on Mountain View because everyone has to drive to get into any commercial situation. Everything is too far to walk when you get to a certain point. And this site is one mile from Safeway. So, at some point, people simply don't walk it anymore, they drive it. And so, as we put commercial that's more strategically located, we actually alleviate traffic because people can get there more readily. I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? Thank you very much, both of you. Okay, with that, then I will close the public hearing. And Mike, we need to consider this in what And Mike, we need to consider this in what order? Comp plan question first?
Yeah, it would come comprehensive plan, land use amendment, and then rezone, and then preliminary plat.
Okay. We have closed the public hearing. And I struggle with this. I just come out of character. I struggle with this in terms of trying to figure out how one balances having input from the community, which I value, and not turning the whole thing into a back-and-forth, back-and-forth, back-and-forth. So, the structure of the process has a seri, has sort of a theater to it, if you will. An opening, a middle, and an end. And so, I think I'm going to stick with, with that structure. Appreciate your understanding. So, Mike, if we're going to work on the comprehensive plan amendment, we have the criteria here that were in your packet. It's a page that begins a reason statement of criteria for granting or denial of comprehensive plan amendment. And, and you also are struggling to find it, Wendy?
Yeah, I don't have it yet.
Okay. And it asks us to consider six questions. Are you going to be able to get it up on screen for us, Mike?
I can, yeah.
That would be wonderful. Because I would like the audience to be able to see the kinds of things that we are working to consider. And in fact, I will share with you that one of the things, the city has been under, in the process of a long-term process of revising first its comprehensive plan, which has been done. And now, we've been working on revising the zoning document that's in support of the comprehensive plan. And one of those pieces is the criteria by which we make these decisions. And I think it's important to just be able to look at the criteria and then think through what it is that we're trying to decide relative to those items. So, there are, let's just, there are the six plus other. Can you scroll back to the top, Mike? Okay. So, the proposed amendment is or is not, this is the decision we're making, consistent with the comprehensive plan, purposes, goals, objectives, and policy. Then the second, a significant change in circumstances has, has not occurred, such as new development or redevelopment, land use plans, et cetera, that is or are not reflected within the current comprehensive plan, which reflects an appropriate change in the community's vision or needs. And then third, the proposed change is, is not logical, harmonious with the land use patterns for the area, existing anticipated land use in the vicinity of subject property on the comprehensive plan map. Okay? And increased demand for public services which could result from the proposed comprehensive ma, amendment can, cannot be made available in the area. Proposed change would or would not be a benefit to the public. And the proposed amendment would, would not cause adverse un, immedicable impacts, that's my favorite word, unmedicable, to public services, infrastructure facilities, or other properties in the vicinity. Okay, so, with that, commissioners, I would entertain a conversation about, and recognizing that the end of this, we're going to make a motion that pretend, if, if you make a motion in favor of adopting this comprehensive plan change, it'll also instruct staff to write the reason statement. So, we can help staff by making, addressing our comments to some of these six points.
I have an immediate question.
Can we first start with, near the mic?
Yes, excuse me. Mike, remind us again, the map isn't absolutely clear and my memory is just a little bit vague. Damon Street to the north is R two?
Correct.
The, the area to the north.
Damon Street.
Damon, R two.
Correct.
Area to the south with Crescent and other streets, R two as well, right?
Correct.
So, I'm struggling with the issue of the. It certainly seems like some spot zoning with R two all around and now R three. And I don't know if, I, I put that out for our discussion.
Okay. I'd, I'd start by asking you to help us understand what you mean by spot zone.
Well, Mike, I guess my concern, and I've been, as I listen to the folks here tonight, I'm very clear about what they're saying. But our intention with the comp plan is trying not to have spot zoning. And we do have examples of spot zoning in our town that's happened over time. But to take an area that is one zone and perhaps put a different zone in a limited area seems like something that we would call as planners, we might call that spot zoning. And I guess, I'm wondering if you would speak to it, Michael, as you've studied this, where, as you put the thing together, we didn't exactly ask the engineer about it. But would appear that I, I like the idea of twin homes. And I like that I realize that as we're going to have to have more of those kinds of homes, but nevertheless, whether this is the exact right place for it is, is I guess my, my question. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I think we ought to at least massage that question a little bit.
Could I just add one thing to that question, which is, could you give examples of areas of recent development where there are twin homes? I'm thinking of the Joseph Street kind of, not, well, kind of off the roundabout there and that general neighborhood. Am I correct? Are those twin homes there or?
Those aren't, there are some twin homes that are over by Green Acres. So, some of the PUDs around there do have twin homes. They've been approved in Tiempo Commons, which is the roundabout out there by White Avenue. You have a similar circumstance where you have Joseph Street, which is a collector, and you have the Converge of White Avenue, which is an arterial in that area. So, you have those similar circumstances. Majority of the recent twin homes that have been constructed are over there on Alturas Drive, which is Indian Hills Sixth Edition, right behind the old Tidymans Building that's currently being used at NRS. And so, you have a lot of homes that are in close proximity to Blaine Street, which is a collector. And so, the intersection of Blaine and Alturas, there's a lot of twin homes being developed. And there's also some townhouses, two sets of four that are right up against Alturas Technology Park. And as you transition into more topographically challenged, hilly areas in Indian Hills Sixth, you end up actually transitioning from R three and R four zones that are on Alturas to R two zones, which are in Indian Hills Sixth Edition and have larger homes similar to Rolling Hills Eighth Edition. So, usually the higher-density twin homes are located in closer proximity to the collector streets and arterial streets of that area adjacent to some type of commercial use.
Joel, you look like you're.
The, I guess the bottom line is that I'm very conflicted. I do, like Nels, like the idea of, of twin homes and I recognize the need for this type of development somewhere. I do like the idea of neighborhood business, but it's always very hard to figure out exactly where it might be located. The easiest way to locate neighborhood business would be on a, on green fields when there are not already residents around to, to be directly affected by it. I guess the thing that bothers me most is that, as we heard in testimony, a lot of people that bought homes in this neighborhood with the, with the knowledge that the property in question was subdivided and it had a land use designation. And the expectation was that it would be, would be developed in a way which would have been more consistent with the, the existing development and what's being proposed. I guess I would be, you know, I live in an established neighborhood, but if, if I lived on the edge of a established neighborhood where I had expected development to proceed beyond me and that the designation on that land next to and beyond me were changed, I'd be upset. And that's what we heard tonight. So, I, I'm also very concerned about parking on the, on the proposed Third Street. The idea of putting in twenty-two units backing onto a collector's street is mind-boggling to me.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to ask you to hold that thought and let's stay on the comprehensive plan questions, since that's our first decision. I, I understand. And it's easy to roll them together. I'm going to just try to keep them teased apart, at least for benefit of staff's writing.
Well, on, the comprehensive plan issue, when you look at where it says the neighborhood conservation is intended to preserve the character of many of the cities existing, built residential neighborhoods, and it seems like that, I'm really concerned about the impact to the surrounding neighborhoods by changing that designation. And I, and I guess then I have to wonder if, if the designation doesn't get changed in the comprehensive plan, does that just end the, the rest of the process as far as then going to rezone and plat?
Yeah, because it, the rezone would have to correspond to the comprehensive plan, land use designation, and then the lot sizes within the subdivision. You know, as it exists right now, you wouldn't be allowed to build twin homes. And there wouldn't be allowed, commercial, you know, you could, you could plat a lot that was two acres in size, but you'd only be able to put one single-family home on it. And so, yeah, the, you'd start out with a comprehensive plan, land use designation, and that would have to determine everything else that follows.
I mean, I, I guess what I'm saying, and I certainly respect the developers' interest in, in having some return on the investment, but when you look at the neighborhood, changing not only the type of housing, but also then putting in a commercial area, both of which would require a change to the comprehensive plan, that's a pretty big leap, it seems to me. So, I mean, I, I'm with Joel. I, I'm really conflicted about this, but, but that part really stands out to me and certainly the testimony that we've had about, from the neighborhood, about how they feel about it. So, I, I'm, I just keep looking at that, intended to preserve the character of the existing residential neighborhoods.
Okay. I have a sort of a devil's advocate question to put to you to try to, again, sharpen this, this, this thinking and, and your argument. What if this currently were Ag Forest? That is, this piece of property has had a long history of people attempting to work on it. And at some point, it got designated its current designation.
Right.
But it has historically been farmed. So, it could have, with a slightly different roll of the dice, made it to today as Ag Forest. Would your argument change at all?
I don't think so. Because whatever you're proposing to put into that area of land, if it changes the character of the neighborhood, then you would still have the same issue. So, I, I, I don't think because it went from Ag Forest to then neighborhood conservation, if, if it left that neighborhood conservation out, I still would have the same problem with the transition to the R three, for example.
I guess I don't have as much of a problem with R three by itself because I've seen R three work very well in historic parts of the city. In fact, I live in an R three zone and it's very much a single-family neighborhood. But when I look at the, I, I, when you look at the plat and you look at the size of the lots and, and you see the bordering, having five lots, but bordering a single lot, that, that to me represents a significant change in the character of a place because you have, I mean, it's R two and I agree, it may be a spot zoning issue as well, but it's also having five parcels, almost a, a pretty high ratio of new subdivided parcels next to very large lot, R two lots. And to me, that, that presents a pretty, that, that hits on the, the number three up there, that the proposed change is pretty dramatically different from the existing surroundings. So, that's where, I, you know, it seems like there's all the right ingredients in this, that, that there is a market out there and it's not college kids and rental properties, it's people who can't afford a $400,000 house. We have a rare, it's rarefied air in Moscow, we don't have those kind of salaries. And I, you know, and, or even above, you, you talk to realtors and getting prices above three hundred. So, that affordability issue is certainly there, but there's too much of a disconnect between what's being planned and what exists. And, and, and so, to me, it sort of hits on that number three. That's.
I'm going to, if I can, I'm going to take a stab at, at a motion and some, some comments with that that I think address this, that also presents my, my argument, and then you can open it up.
Thank you.
From there. I'm going to move that we do, I'm going to have to go back to find the language. I'm going to move that we do amend the comprehensive plan as proposed. And, and here's why. First of all, I appreciate all the comments from the people who've come in and talked about the change in character of the neighborhood. Everybody who owns a house is concerned about that. If, if I had a house there, I would be concerned about the same thing. I live in an older, established neighborhood and probably when that was built in 1968, people might have had the same kinds of, kinds of concerns. So, I, I could, I, I do appreciate that, that consideration. At the same time, this is not a question of whether that area is going to be developed or how it's going to be developed. And I think this is consistent with the overall tone of the comprehensive plan and things that we've discussed about in this commission, various meetings and with our, with our readings. We've, we've talked about ways that we can encourage more lower-cost housing, affordable housing, I guess is the, is the term for it, and increase some density in existing areas within the city limits. And also, increase the locations of, of neighborhood businesses and commercial areas to, to diversify that and disperse it from a central, a central core area. And I think that this proposal is, is consistent with that. I think that it, it does appear that there's been a, a significant change in circumstances, certainly in the, in the market. You know, we've seen that over the past ten years, just the somewhat volatile change at times in, in the, in terms of the market. And now, what, what might have worked before in a parcel where you could build lots of larger homes, isn't going to work in the same way now. We have, we have a different economy. And if it's not feasible to use the land as it was initially envisioned, then I think it makes sense to consider alternatives that make, that make the development feasible in a way that's, again, consistent with, with the overall pattern. There's been a lot of discussion, again, like most of the comments, about whether this is under the third criteria, harmonious with the land use pattern for the area. And I, I think one question there, and this goes to the spot zoning too, is, is how do you define area? If you look at. If you look at, the closer you look, you can draw a picture and say, well, no, this is not consistent because it's surrounded by R2. And we're talking about putting an R3 in a neighborhood business right in the middle of that. But if you expand the area, not far away is another neighborhood business with the Picard Orthodontics, the Nazarene Church. There's R3 across Mountain View there off the Sixth Street. So I think, again, depending on how big or small you draw the area, you can make that argument different ways. But I think that this is consistent with the overall area in that part of town. And I understand, there are going to be, there's differences of opinion on this. People are going to view this differently. And no matter what we decide tonight, somebody's not going to be happy. But as I look at the topography out there, I think there's a lot of natural, I wouldn't say barriers, but differentiations between the existing R2 and what's being proposed here to mitigate some of those impacts. There was some talk about the increased demand for public services and questions about that. And it does appear that the master plan takes into account the fact that the sewer's going to need to be expanded. And it sounds like that needs to happen now, regardless of what happens here, and that that's been accounted for in part of the plan. So I don't see this as making a significant impact on that, at least a negative impact on that. I think, and again, understanding that these things are subject to interpretation, a matter of opinion, I do think that overall, this is the kind of thing that would be a benefit to the public. We do need some more affordable housing. And certainly, particular people may or may not think it's a benefit to them. But I think as we look at what, the direction that we want to, we've talked about Moscow in general, again, affordable housing, increasing density within the city limits. I think this is a way to address that. And in that sense, is very much in the public interest. And finally, with the, I don't think that this would cause adverse, unmitigable impacts to the public services, infrastructure facilities, other properties. Again, we talked about the sewer and the fact that there's utilities, some utilities that have already been in place and extended because everybody, you know, we've always known development was coming here. And again, I look at the topography out there. And again, I know Phil. And I know that Phil is, if anything, he's going to err on the high end of what can be put out there and what, in the range of things. There were some concerns about, you know, the kind of, what townhomes and twin homes look like. Certainly, there's people who do it wrong and there's people who do it right. There's a range of things that can go out there, some of which, examples of which exist in Moscow where it can be very, very nice. I think of what's out on, I think it's Brittany Lane, and then on the Polk Extension where there's a row of twin homes that are lovely homes and haven't, you know, where we haven't seen those concerns come to pass. So given those things, I think that this is a good direction to go. And again, would move that we adopt the proposed change to the comprehensive plan.
Thank you for that articulate statement. Is there a second? I'm looking for a second. I will second it for purposes of continuing this conversation because I think, protocol-wise, we need that. First, I have a question for Mike. Looking at the lots as they're... No, I'm not going to ask that question. Because that's not a zone question. I got suckered into a lot size question. I guess the question that I think Gregory is arguing and that I'd like you to think about, perhaps answer, is can we densify? That is, at one point, we've laid a certain development pattern out on the land. And in this case, we've laid it across empty land. Is it possible to change our minds and densify? Or is that not possible? I think Gregory would argue, yeah, circumstances have changed. And I think some of you have argued, no. I'd just like to hear...
Well, I think that, just, I think some changes in density certainly could be done that would continue to be in character with the neighborhood. And with respect to the comprehensive plan change, if you go to the auto-urban residential, that covers a pretty broad spectrum of possibilities, from R1 to, I think, what, up to R3. So you're not, in that particular piece of it, you are allowing some room for additional density that might be appropriate. So I certainly support that part of it. And I'm, I guess, kind of hung up on the suburban commercial piece of it. And since this seems to be part of a package, I like part of it and don't like the other part, so...
But I don't think we're in the position of re-engineering it. It's thumbs up or thumbs down on the idea as presented. Okay. Another sort of devil's advocate question would be, if we're not going to densify here, where are we going to densify? Or are we? That is, maybe there really isn't. You don't perceive there's a need to have different changes in our zoning.
We have densified out on, to answer your question. We have, out on White Avenue. The whole development out there is quite different than anything we've done in town. So we have, and we've densified on A Street. So it isn't that we're not interested in densifying in Moscow and we have good examples of where we're doing that without changing the pattern. It's done, in other words, it gets back to, in some ways, to my spot zoning question of how big is a spot? You know, is it 10 acres? Is it three acres? Is it 15 acres? And so, it's hard. No one knows what that spot is. But in some cases, when we see it, we can kind, when we, we know it when we see it. And I'm afraid to say that, or not afraid, but I believe I see a spot here before my eyes.
Well, neighborhood business in its nature is a spot zone. It's somewhere around two acres in size is what the zoning code generally directs us towards. Really, it's the distinction between an illegal spot zone and a spot zone. An illegal spot zone would be solely for private gain. So in this circumstance, you have a spot zone in a neighborhood business zone or suburban commercial, but it's intended to serve the neighborhoods surrounding that area, not solely for private gain.
If you remember Indian Hill 6, it ended up being zoned in almost concentric rings of R4, R3, R2. There, it was all blank ground. There were some neighbors to the west who were concerned about the lowest density of it. But the rings, we didn't struggle with, is that a spot to make just a small amount of R4 along Alturas? Anyway, so I just, it's a word I struggle with. Any other comments from commissioners before I call for the question? And I want to be sure I'm clear what the question is, which is that we're talking about, the motion is to amend the comprehensive plan. And none of the other questions that were on the zone are correct?
Right. It's my understanding we had to take that first and, yeah. So yes.
Right. So this is a question of amending the comprehensive plan. Any last comments? And I'm pushing you because there's a potential that the developer appeals to council. And I'm trying to help you build the record, the argument that you wish have go to council.
I do have a question with respect to the suburban commercial designation. Can that subsequently be developed as residential? Or does it have to remain commercial once it's designated that in the comprehensive plan?
So if it got changed to suburban commercial, would it still be allowed to develop as residential?
Correct.
Well, it would in that neighborhood business, which is the corresponding zone to that land use designation, would allow wide variety of residential uses. So presumably, it still could be developed as residential, even if it was changed from neighborhood conservation to suburban commercial and subsequently rezone to neighborhood business.
Okay. Can I just make, on the spot zoning thing, just one comment on that. I recall, I don't know what the legal standard is for spot zoning. I don't know what criteria the city attorney would use, for example. But I do recall meetings where we've had the city zoning map up here. And there's some really, really teeny zones up there that are smaller than what we're talking about here. So if we're comparing to existing zones in the city, I wouldn't say this is a spot zone in that sense.
Well, don't worry. I live next to a very interesting spot zone. Been living next to it for 35 years. And I know one when I see it. But I, it hasn't destroyed my life. Neither has it enhanced my life. And probably wouldn't have suggested it had I had the choice. But I bought a piece of property that was next to something that was where R4 and R2 gets to sit side by side. And it's not the end of the world. Nevertheless, when I look at the map here, we have a choice here. And many of those spot zones that you're talking about have happened incidentally or through serendipitous actions. This is not a serendipitous action that we're taking tonight. This is a thoughtful action. And so that makes it slightly different, Greg, I think.
Okay. All right. I am going to call for the question. All in favor of the motion to amend the comprehensive plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? One, two, three, four. Okay, so motion fails. Is there any further move that we need to take, Mike? Or is this hearing pretty well just come to an end as a result?
Well, I think you need a motion to deny the comprehensive plan land use amendment request.
Okay. We need to do the opposite motion. Okay. So I would entertain a motion to deny the comprehensive land use amendment request.
So moved.
Joel?
Second.
Second, from Nels, okay? All in favor of the motion to deny the comprehensive land use amendment? Say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions. Okay. So, thank you. Now have we acquitted the issue?
I think you still need to go through the zoning and the preliminary plat and deny those as well.
Deny those as well, just so that the whole issue is, okay. So...
Do we need, do we need...
Motions both ways or just...
I think you need motions both ways. So you'd recommend denial of the zoning based upon the comprehensive plan.
Not aligned with the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, not aligned with the comprehensive plan, yep.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to deny the rezone based on not alignment with the comprehensive plan.
So moved.
Joel? And Nels, okay? All in favor of the motion to deny the rezone? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? And so that motion carried? And...
You need a motion to recommend denial of the preliminary plat?
And, okay, I will entertain a motion to recommend a denial of the preliminary plat based on the fact that it does not align with the comprehensive plan or the zone.
So moved.
Okay. I'll take, however you want to write it down, Joel and Rob.
And we'll still need staff to draft relevant criterion standards and denial of all three of those.
And would you, let's do one more motion and just capture all of that instruction to staff. All right. So the motion is to deny...
For staff to draft relevant criteria?
No, I'm not there yet. I've got the motion on the floor, which is the rezone, no, the preliminary plat, which is not going to now align with the other two.
Correct.
Okay. So Joel and Rob, however Ann wishes to write it down, it was a race to the front. Move to deny the preliminary plat. All in favor of the denial of the preliminary plat? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay? So again, four to two, Ann. Now, I would entertain one motion to direct staff to write reasoned statements for all three of the actions you just took.
So moved.
Thank you, Nels. The second from Joel. All in favor of instructing staff to write the reasoned statement? Say aye.
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 And opposed? And abstentions? I think I'm going to record that as unanimous unless I see some other indication. So with, yes, Mike?
I just wanted to clarify a previous statement about maybe an appeal. There really is no appeal at this point. The applicant could choose to move on to city council with your recommending denial of those three aspects.
It's not an appeal mechanism, but it is a move forward mechanism.
Correct. We're recommending denial on those three items. And they're still able to move forward should the applicant wish to. You would just go to city council with that recommendation.
Following that recommendation, okay? Thank you for the clarification, Mike. All right. That takes care of item six on our agenda. Any of you who wish to stay are welcome. And any of you who wish to go home at this hour are welcome. Okay. Let's take a three-minute break. We'll reconvene at 9:10. All right, we are back on the air. This is the Wednesday, July 22 meeting of Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission, and we are at number seven on the agenda, which is a discussion of some of the things that we were just wrestling with. Mike, this is a discussion of our relevant criteria and standards.
Thank you. Yeah, like Mr. Chair just mentioned, we had just gone through the three sets of relevant criteria and standards for comp plan, rezon, as well as preliminary plat. And just wanted to kind of give you some background about where those come from and what our statutory requirements are under the Local Land Use Planning Act of Idaho statutes. And so you look up LUPA, and within 65, 35, they're required approval or denial of any application to be based upon express standards and to be in writing. And so that's where our relevant criteria come from. It goes on to say, "Criteria and standards shall be set forth in comp plan, zoning code, or other appropriate ordinance." You know, this is a bit odd because you wouldn't have something like that in the comp plan. So that's a kind of outdated language that the state code has, but you would see it in the zoning code or other appropriate ordinance. Then it has a couple of sentences, paragraphs that it uses, that "Such approvals and standards and criteria shall be set forth in express terms in land use ordinances in order that permit, in order that permit applicants, interested residents, and decision makers alike may know the express standards that must be met in order to obtain a requested permit or approval." So just as, you know, include copies of those within any of these applications. So the commission knows, the council knows, when the applicant submits a request, they understand the criteria, and the public understands the criteria when going to a public hearing and viewing those. Then it goes on to say, "The approval or denial of any application required or authorized pursuant to this chapter shall be in writing and accompanied by a reasoned statement that explains the criteria and standards considered relevant, states the relevant contested facts relied upon, and explains the rationale for the decision based on the applicable provisions of the comprehensive plan, relevant ordinance, and statutory provisions, pertinent constitutional principles, and factual information contained in the record." So that really just lays out our relevant criteria and standards document. You have the findings of fact, and then you have those criteria at the very end, which really constitute the final decision. Looking at our city code, within the zoning code, subdivision ordinance, these are the land use actions that were required to have some type of relevant criteria and standards adopted within our code, and then in every action either deny or approve those criteria. And so we go through comp plan amendment, conditional use permit. We have specific criteria for conditional use permits for cellphone towers. Because there's, Telecommunications Act requires certain things of the city, and that's why we have to have, you know, specific standards for those conditional use permits. Plan unit developments have their own special use permits, even though special use permits are really the same as a conditional use permit. And we're going to end up, with the code rewrite, we're going to end up combining those. And so it'll probably just be conditional use permit instead of drawing a distinction between the two, because they are the same, same criteria. Subdivision plat, rezon, and variance also require their own. If you look at our city code, the underlying ones are the ones that are currently within the code. So comp plan amendment, subdivision plat, rezon, we've been using the ones we have for 20 years. They're provided at every hearing and part of every packet, but they're actually not codified with any portion of our city code. And so that is, you know, an issue I bring to you today, is that in order to be consistent with state law, we really need to codify the criteria that we've been using for the last 20 years. And then that, you know, if you may have meant, noticed during the, when we reviewed the state language, it doesn't go through each individual land use action and list what criteria you're required to adopt in order to approve any of these actions. And so it's really, they really leave it up to each individual municipality to adopt their own criteria. And so here we have an example of our criteria. City of Moscow's for a variance approval. So it goes through five questions, criterion that you're required to justify in order to approve a variance. There has to be special circumstances on the property which aren't applicable to other properties in the same zone. The applicant has to demonstrate because of those conditions that there's some type of hardship, that they've been deprived of rights commonly enjoyed by other owners of properties within the same zone, and that the, those special conditions or circumstances can't be the result of actions of the property owner, and the granting of variance will not confer a special privilege on the property that's denied other properties that are similarly situated, and that it can't be in conflict with the public interest or injurious to property or persons. But if you look at Boise's variance criteria, a lot simpler than ours. You know, they only have three. Usually it has to deal with some type of hardship, exceptional circumstance, can't be in conflict with the comp plan, will not affect a change in zoning, it won't be detrimental to the kind of public health, safety, welfare that we always come back to.
And a, somebody that comes to the Board of Adjustment is dealing with just one piece of property, right?
Correct. Yeah, typically, yeah. I mean, the way the variance is defined...
Have you ever seen a kind of a class action part of adjustment deal?
Yeah, it goes to the Board of Adjustment, and they, they...
But it's parcel by parcel, it's not...
Correct.
You couldn't come in and say, "All the parcels on this block are looking for this variance."
Well, if it was all same property owner and they were, they could request multiple variances across properties. But yeah, typically it's just one parcel, you know. If you were to do that, it would be, it really constitutes some type of zone change if you were to select an area and say we're going to do that.
We probably need some cross-training and go sit at Board of Adjustment for a couple of sessions.
Well, it's intended to be really hard in order to approve a variance, and that's why they set the criteria like they do, because there really has to be special circumstances. So say, you have a lot, and there's a stream that runs right through the middle of it, and you apply the setbacks for that zone, and the only location after you apply the setbacks is going to be in the middle of the stream. Well, obviously you can't build in the middle of the stream, so you get a variance for maybe the front setback in order to shift the building 10 feet from the front property line instead of 30 feet from the front property line. Those are the circumstances. Or maybe the lot's pre-existing, and it's so small that after you apply the setbacks, maybe there's only room for a house that's 10 by 10, and all the rest of the houses in the neighborhood are 2,000 square feet. So that, you know, that would be qualify for some type of variance. But just because you think a deck off the backside of your property into the setback would be a neat thing, would not qualify as a variance. And so they're intended to be pretty tough to justify. But ours is probably, you know, maybe one of the, you know, extreme as far as the ability to grant a variance, it's really tough. There's not a lot of conditions that wouldn't be the result of what the property owner intends to do or the actions of the property owner. So that's one that, you know, is probably highlighted in my mind as probably being one of the more onerous, or one of the, one of the conditions that's a little bit harder to justify in previous Board of Adjustment hearings on variances. Coeur d'Alene has three, just like Boise. They are even simpler than the Boise ones. Undo hardship, which is pretty common, they're not in conflict with the public interest, and it's going to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan. So a lot easier to maybe justify a variance for Coeur d'Alene. Post Falls also has three. Pretty similar to the Boise and Coeur d'Alene ones.
You think there's a good reason then for Twin Falls in Moscow to have a bunch more verbiage than those simple ones? Have you, have you talked about that at all?
Well, I think that this may be a discussion, discussion for the commission. And, you know, that's where I was, I was leading with this. We have some, some gaps right now in that we don't have some criteria codified. That's one component. And I think the other component is maybe reviewing all the criteria that we currently have compared to other municipalities and seeing, you know, maybe ours are too onerous, and we want to allow a little bit more flexibility with, with variances. You know, I think that'll be a broader conversation, but, and that's really, you know, I think that, you know, when I get to it here, that, you know, if the commission's all right with this, we, I think staff can move forward and, and maybe draft some code amendments to include just those cleanup with the rezon, comp plan, and subdivision criteria. And then bring backs, maybe after we review and do a little research about other municipalities, some recommendations, and then we can have a larger discussion. But, you know, thinking about this internally, I think that it'll probably fit in with, I think I may have reported that we're in the process of converting zoning code to a use table. So we'll have all the uses listed in one succinct table instead of going zone by zone to find, you know, the number of allowed uses. It'll be a lot more user-friendly to staff as well as the public and the commission and the council. And so we're right in the middle of that right now. We've been making some pretty good progress. And I think that the way we have it lined up, that we could get this queued up, and then when it's time to adopt the, or go through the use table discussion, we could do those concurrently. So we could get this one, you know, talk about this in the next couple of months, maybe get our final recommendations together, and then once the use table is ready, just do everything at once, because it would be a, more of a cleanup on that, too.
So it's sort of, in my mind, fortuitous that this discussion fell right after that discussion.
Yeah.
But the reason that I asked staff to help us get started on this was I thought it might be something that we wanted to sit with for a little while. If you back up to, I don't know, the Coeur d'Alene one, maybe. There, and we're not making that decision about variances, but when the language gets that simple, there's an undue hardship. That then puts this huge range of interpretation. And this year's members of the panel and last year's members of the panel may not interpret the word hardship the same way. And so I, I'm concerned to get predictability by getting good definitions.
Are you thinking about the Supreme Court?
Trying not to get to the Supreme Court. But on the other hand, if it gets, I have trouble with some of the ones that we currently have. Well, this one, which is part of the zoning one, has a couple of my irritations in it. Number three, proposed rezon is, is not a per se invalid spot zoning, and I don't know what spot zoning means. I.e., it is, is not arbitrary, that it does, does not serve the general public interest, and that it is, is not solely for private gain. There's like four decisions in there, and if you make one of those negative and three of those positive, what's the outcome? And so I struggle with that language and wanting us to, to have a clear thing to talk about and to be able to get articulate about it. And I appreciated Gregory, because if you kind of followed along, he was trying to hit those points in his argument for, for his motion. To make it so that it is just easier for us all to do a good job, and I think for staff to work with applicants. Because if I were an applicant, I would want to come here thinking I was going to be a winner. And I'd read this and been able to interpret what the likely outcome, because I understood the words and I understood the syntax. And so that's why I thought, we've got a little more time this summer, if we can start it now. It's interesting to hear now Mike's proposal of where it might schedule, which sounds like months out. Because I just wanted us all to have a chance to sit with these kinds of questions of how do we articulate, and I end up with this with my child. You know, I try to give her a guideline phrase. And I end up with this with my child, you know, I try to give her a guideline phrase so she'll know what cooperating and not cooperating look like, and how do you give that good language and all share a meaning in those things? So I've spoken a bunch, I welcome some other comments, if you have some about this topic or the plan, or--
I like that, I think you're right. I've, I've looked at these in various contexts over the years. I think particularly of the one for conditional use permits, which I swear has two criteria that you can't tell which, what the difference is between the two of them, but they're two separate things in there. And I, even in these, predictability is just difficult. It's, I think it's difficult for the applicants, I think it's difficult for us to figure out. It's difficult for the public to know what to address when they're making comments. It would be helpful, I think, there if there were some, if they had some things that they could look at and say, "Well, you know, I look at these criteria, you have to decide about, and I think it does or doesn't fit that for these reasons." So yeah, I'm, I'm all for this project.
Okay, we'll, we'll continue to work on this topic. And I have wondered whether we could find readings on it. So far, I haven't been successful in my inquiries to find any readings.
It's probably just reading--
Reading some examples, I mean, this was nice, right, yeah. I like this because--
Chance to process them a little bit, yeah.
Part of the reason that it's hard to find, I know in teaching urban things, we've had, Wendy and I have struggled with trying to find good stuff on zoning. But part of the reason that it, often zoning is doing something other than what we, the problem that we pass out, it's protecting the rich from the poor, and a lot of stuff that we don't talk about in our country. And, and the people who write books on zoning admit that, gosh, this is hard to write, because the real reason for these zones is something that they won't buy my book if I write it. And, and, you know, and so it's, 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 in a way, it's a kind of a common usage, and a kind of a, over years, over decades, we develop certain approaches, but we sometimes don't want to admit to what they're doing. Because I had, I've had a hard time in the last 25 years to really find somebody who wrote really clearly, and oftentimes they say about zoning, "Well, you know, this is, you know, is it for the public welfare?" Well--
Which public?
What does that mean?
Okay. Great. So I think this is an interesting project to work on. Mike, number eight, draft floodplain ordinance update.
Well, this'll be a quick one. I thought that we were going to be able to get a, some comments back from Idaho Department of Water Resources, but haven't, haven't got our draft back yet, so we'll have to continue that on to next meeting.
Okay. Great. And the thing I forgot to say at the beginning of the meeting, but we'll say now under number nine, is right now the city has a draft of its water conservation plan, and that draft has been presented to a workshop of the council, correct? It wasn't presented in any decision-making context.
Correct.
And the Sustainable Environment Commission, I believe it was, requested that there be a public comment period for the comprehensive, for the water conservation plan. And the plan contains four possible actions. One is continue doing what we're doing. And then each of the others is building on that, so it's a stack. And the staff has recommended the adoption of Plan C. So A, we're doing, B, C, and D were looked at, and staff has recommended C. Anyway, the comment period runs until August 7?
Correct. Yeah, I know that a press release had gone out, I don't know if it was this last week or the week before, but there had been a press release, and yeah, the, the public comment period ends August 7.
Okay.
And you can find a copy of the document on Public Works Department page. So if you go to our main city webpage on the top tab, there'll be a drop-down. You click Departments, and then Public Works, and then it'll be on the bottom left-hand corner, Draft Water Conservation Plan.
Great. So I would encourage commissioners, and I would encourage the public to give some thought to that plan and to provide public input. And that mechanism is by writing a letter to Les, or how does the, how do you provide your--
It'd probably be best to address it to Nicole Baker.
Nicole Baker, okay. At the city. All right?
Question?
Question, yes.
It doesn't actually go to Nicole?
Can we come up to the microphone? Yeah. Or they'll crank the volume up on us. Thank you, AV.
David Hall, I live outside of town, actually, 1334 Wallen Road, but the comments go to Judy Davis, I believe, but it tells who to send to on the, in the press release.
Okay.
It's not Nicole.
Okay. It's not Nicole, okay.
Thank you.
Great. David, appreciate that clarification. Okay, with the tabling of that, so we will come back and have Nicole tentatively then at our August meeting, but that will be after the end of the comment period, which is why I was trying to just use this forum to promote that activity. Anyway, so with that, we're adjourned.